All right, good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. If you'd please stand and join us in the front of the flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation on your own indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being audio and video recorded and will be shown on local access television. The first thing on the agenda is the ratification of employment. Linda?
So I'm just asking what Christine Ian is going to be filling in when Lorna's out on maternity, please, probably until August, and I'm just asking for the board's approval.
All right, great, thank you.
So it sounds like you've got a hard date that Lorna's coming back.
Well, she'll be back in August sometime.
Okay, just waiting. No pressure.
All right, good to meet you Christine.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Anything else? All right, so is there a motion?
I move to ratify her employment as a temporary Board of Selectmen's secretary.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vote on twenty-three budget. David, do you want to, I think you had a memo in here.
I do. All right, so obviously addressed to the board. Executive summary, this budget presentation reflects all budgets. Ian also takes into account the budget message that was the selectmen discussed at the December first twenty twenty-one meeting. I will say that this budget assumes a raise in the tax levy of two and a half percent, but unknown to the general public as proposition two and a half. I'm pretty proud of this budget because the decision of the board was to make sure that our department heads in our departments had the support and the staff that they needed. And so inclusive in this budget is going to allow the town to hire the equivalent of four and a half FTEs in our local school district to order, to be able to ha- hire five FTEs. You will see that the operational budget is about a five point one six percent year over year, which includes the water department. There are three major drives, drivers in the year-over-year increase. I've listed those for you. The operational budget for the town, which means it excludes the water department, is actually up one point nine million or about five point four percent. It does, so based on the fact that the selectmen want to make sure that the departments were, that they receive the funding they needed, I made very minor modifications to the budget that I'm presenting to you this evening. Inclusive in this budget is additional staff from the building department, conservation, DPW, fire, water, our local schools, and the COA. And it also includes funding a new position referred to the town planner. The finance committee will again be fully funded as it was in FY twenty twenty-two. And I note that although this is a five percent increase, which would not be sustainable, I do honestly believe this is a anomaly. Normally it's only three to three and a half percent, but the increased staff was necessary. And quite frankly, if through the years we had just hired one at a time, we wouldn't be where we are today, but you know, that's, again, we're just doing what the town needs. It's a growing town. In reference to revenue, we do have the benefit of about seven seventy-three thousand dollars of additional state revenue through chapter seventy funds. That was a change in the state law formula passed in twenty nineteen, and because of COVID, they didn't fund it, so that's why we're seeing it this year. In receipts, I always forecast generally conservative in receipts. I'm using two point eight million dollars this year. We're on track to get to that number. And again, we have had higher numbers in the past, but I've always been conservative. I do not blow out the receipts. Because as I use for an example, if in FY twenty-one I used actuals from FY twenty, we would have actually run a four hundred thousand dollar deficit, which would have been no good. And so I just stated at the end, it is a tight budget, meaning that we don't have additional flexibility in the budget that was proposed. But we do have the flexibility to provide the funding that is needed. And so you will see here that our FY twenty-three budget increase is about one point nine million dollars year over year. And, you know, in a snapshot, how I'm able to be able to cover it with, with the different buckets of cash and revenues. The next sheet, we can go through if you would like, but basically what I do is I indicate to the board as to what changes I made in each respective budget. And if there's any questions, I can answer them, and if not, then I would ask the board to basically recommend a budget, whether it's this one or a different one, that the finance committee will then review tomorrow evening. That would go before town meeting for May ninth.
Thank you, David. Does anyone have any comments on the, on David's recommendations or additional adjustments?
No, I'm happy to see that the departments are getting what they asked for. At the, at the meeting where we talked about this, we asked the departments to come in and to show us what they needed and to prove to us that they needed it. And this budget is giving them exactly what they came in and said they needed, so I'm very happy with this budget.
Mostly. There's one, that's the only one real adjustment.
I'm sorry?
There's one adjustment that I would, the, the building inspector, is really the only adjustment that we're kind of making.
Aren't we adding FTEs?
Half.
We are. We're giving him a lot of what he asked for, yes.
Right.
Yeah, the other departments as well. The, most of them are getting, or they're getting what they asked for.
He had requested a full.
Oh, yes.
We reduced that to half, which I think is appropriate and something we can look at down the line when they get further into their electronic records and other improvements they've made.
And he also asked for a part-time inspector, and we're funding that as well.
Mm-hmm.
So he's actually going to receive two additional hires.
Many of these departments have come before us for years, and we haven't increased the size of their departments, whereas the town has continued to grow, so I'm happy to see this.
I think he's asked for this for four or five years now.
He's, I'm sorry.
I think he's asked for this for four or five years.
Yeah, yeah, so now he's getting what he's been asking for. Our employees are the most important asset we have. We've got to take care of them. I'm happy with this.
Any additional comments for your motion?
Nope. Make a motion to approve the budget as presented and send it to the finance committee?
Second.
Is that, did I say that right?
Yeah, no, that's fine, thank you.
I, I will second the motion, but with two, I need to recuse myself completely from the library budget.
Oh, I do too.
And I would also recuse myself from the educational budget with regard to any lines that have, that pertain to teacher's salary.
Can I amend my motion? I'd like to amend my emotion to make sure I abstain from any compensation or insurance benefit lines that may impact my husband or my family.
So I would second the amended motion along with what I said to recuse myself from the library in its entirety and from the educational budget, particularly to the teacher's salary lines. And there's the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And so technically we just did not pass DPW compensation and...
Oh, right, so now you guys got to vote on that, and then we vote on education and teachers, or education and library?
So you...
Is that right? Because Meredith excluded DPW compensation and benefits from her motion.
Did you exclude or did you recuse yourself?
I abstained.
You just recuse yourself is, should we just amend it? Where she recused it, you just need to recuse yourself from those particular lines, but approve the rest of the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, it should, it should be a recusal because by recusing your portion, there are still two votes on the rest.
Right.
Ian recusing your portion, there are two votes on the rest.
Okay.
So that would overlap.
Okay.
So we're good?
I think, so did you get into this, okay. I think, I think that's the spirit of the board and, and the, the key is, is that you're making public disclosure, so there is not a conflict.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a few layouts of roads. They're looking to be accepted as public ways, I believe. Has the planning board done their hearings on these, or how did I forget the process?
No worries. So they have, they have done their hearing. They are making a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen at this point that these roads be laid out and be placed on the warrant and then be brought to town meeting for their approval. So the process right now is, is that for the selectmen to officially lay out the road, we're not going to pull a map out and put a rule into it, so really what your vote in your motion would be is that the Board of Selectmen agree to lay out the road as presented by the planning board and recommend to town meeting their ex, I'm sorry, lay out the road as presented by the planning board. You're not making a recommendation on it this evening.
Can I say so moved?
You can say so moved. And I will let you know, just as an FYI, there are two roads that there are some deed research issues that are still ongoing. That doesn't affect us laying out the road at this point. That will affect the planning board's ability to be able to make the motion at town meeting. So they technically have until town meeting to get those clarification errors handled. So all you're doing is laying out the road as presented. Surely you are going to place it on the warrant when we vote on the warrant articles. And the planning board then will correct those issues and move them at town meeting. If they do not correct them, they will not be able to move them at town meeting.
Okay, um, is there some motion? Did you make a second?
No, I didn't. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, vote on articles to be placed on the warrant for town meeting. David, do you want to run through these?
Sure. So I will, what I would ask is I will run through them.
You can skip the first few of the...
Yep, and, and then if you have any questions, just say hold, we'll go back to it. If you don't, then we're going to assume that you're okay. You are not taking a position on whether you're in favor or not. All you're doing is stating that you will place this on the warrant for town meeting to review.
David, when is the deadline to put, like our, well, it's an internal deadline, I guess, to put them on the warrant?
That passed on May twenty-fifth.
No, no, no. When do we need to have it finalized so it can be printed and all that, posted and...
It'll be in two weeks because you'll vote at that point, and then it'll get printed afterwards. So me, April twentieth, probably like April twenty-second?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the first handful ones are one, two, three, and five are annual, are, are articles. Article four is the budget which you just voted on. Article six is for chapter ninety funds to receive them and spend them. Article seven is to set up the monies that are being unspent in CPC administrative buckets. Article eight is to receive money from the state in reference to CPC that was left over from last year. Article nine is a CPC article to fund the debt on Friendship Park. Article ten is to fund improvements at the housing authority on Esther Drive, again using CPC. Article eleven is a CPC article in order to be able to place an APR restriction on the Shady Oak Howard Farm on River Street. Article twelve CPC article for additional work at War Memorial Park. Article thirteen CPC article to be able to have the veterans committee lay out gravestones and/or plaques at the, at cemeteries. Article fourteen is to fund other post-employment benefits, OPEB. Article fifteen is to have a town match to the West Bridgewater Police Department through the West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Bridgewater Task Force and get an annual article. Article sixteen is to add money to the sidewalk fund. Article seventeen is money that comes from the state, from the Ober, and what's the other one, Lyft drivers. We get a certain percentage of that. Article eighteen is the start of your capital budget articles. This is to build a new building, demolish the old building, and build a new building at the transfer station. This will also include site work, a new septic system, and other items related to it. Article nineteen is a capital budget item to bu- build a new lar- I'm sorry, sorry, to purchase a new large plow truck and replace the old one. Article twenty is a capital budget item to purchase a new tractor. Article twenty-one is a capital budget item to replace the old motorcycle and replace it with a new motorcycle at the police department. Article twenty-two is to remove an old police vehicle and replace it with a new police vehicle. Article twenty-three is a grant through FEMA. It is a ten percent match, five percent match. It's a five percent match where the federal government will provide us about two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, and we have to provide five percent, which in this case is eleven grand. Article twenty-four is for the council on aging, again a capital budget item, to purchase a new eight-passenger full-size van. Article twenty-five, capital budget item for the council on aging to do sale coating and other repairs to its pavement. Article twenty-six, capital budget item from the IT department to upgrade the town's Wi-Fi system. Article twenty-seven, capital budget item for IT to upgrade the town's server software. Article twenty-eight, capital budget item to upgrade workstations related to IT at the council on aging. Article twenty-nine, capital budget item through the school committee to purchase a new generator for the Rose McDonald School. Article thirty, capital budget item for the school committee to replace a boiler at the middle school, high school. Article thirty-one, capital budget item for the school committee to purchase new HVAC upgrade at the middle school, high school. Article thirty-two, capital budget item, water department to purchase new gate operating machines. Article thirty-three, capital budget item through the water department for a new tank water age assessment and altitude valve at the North Elm Water Tank. Article thirty-four, capital budget item for the water department for a pilot study to eventually build a new treatment plant at the Seer Street Norman Ave plant. Article thirty-five, capital budget item, water department, same as the previous one, but it would be at Manly Street. Article thirty-six is to fund a town planner position. Article thirty-seven is the Board of Selectmen's request to amend the personnel bylaw. And article thirty-eight are the roads that you just discussed being placed before town meeting for their acceptance.
Is this inclusive of all capital items that were, were requested?
Uh, there was only one that was not, that the answer is no. There is one capital budget item that was not approved at the capital budget committee. It was for forty-six thousand dollars to purchase a vehicle for the building department.
Okay. So I guess really the, the biggest thing on here is the capital items, because if we're not in favor of one, we wouldn't put it on the warrant, most likely. Although I think I'm good with all of them. I don't know if there's any other comments. In, on article thirty-seven, the bylaw change, later on the agenda, we do have a report from the bylaw study committee with a favorable recommendation.
That is correct. That was their only request to review, and they did get a favorable recommendation on this bylaw change.
Any comments or motions?
We don't discuss at this point whether we're for or against or how any of them are funded, right?
No, you should only answer those questions.
Well, in some ways we could. If we're, if there's something we don't recommend, then why would we put it on? Right?
Yeah, I guess if you, if you're questioning how it's going to be funded, that might be a discussion we should have now because maybe we shouldn't recommend to even put it on the warrant.
No, I was asking more procedurally. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something. That's all. Thank you, though.
This has been the culture of the board, is to vote on what will be placed before the town meeting. And that way it gives you two weeks to be able to do whatever homework you need to on the articles and make a decision whether you were in favor or against it at the next meeting. But that's your culture, so you can change it at any time. Like, there's no real policy, there's no state law, there's no rule of regulation. And by all means, if the board was going to be against something, then you may choose not to place it on the warrant.
Is the plow truck a replacement?
Yes.
And is there currently a generator at the Rosa? Is that new or is that...
The one that is there is not working, has not been working for some time.
How long do you know?
I do not know.
I know the kids missed school this year.
Really?
Because of the generator.
Then I suppose those kids don't want a generator.
Oh, yeah. That's why I'm in favor. Get them in school.
Is there a motion to, is all on the warrant?
How are we supposed to... Is there a certain way we're supposed to say the motion?
Just place all presented articles on the warrant?
Oh, okay. I move to place all the presented articles on the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, skim milk bridge structural evaluation contract and historic nomination contract. David, what is...
Yep, so there's actually two contracts before you. You may recall that a few years ago, we went to town meeting using CPC funds in the skim milk bridge. Apparently, I don't, I didn't have time to look this up, but I remember the presentation. It has something to do with it is one of the oldest, if not the oldest, walking bridge made of stone, either in America or the East Coast or some version of that. And as a result, it needed some work, so town meeting approved using CPC funds to do some, a structural evaluation on it so we can determine exactly what has to be fixed. The second is, is that using that structural evaluation, we will then be able to apply for a historical nomination at the federal level. And it is my understanding that if we're able to secure that federal designation, then not only does it make it more prestigious, but it also allows us to be able to secure federal funds in the future as opposed to either just local funds or state funds. So that was a thought process. The first agreement, which is the structural evaluation contract, is they're requesting to be awarded WJE architects in the amount of seventy-eight hundred dollars, and for the historical nomination, which is my understanding that they will do some work, but not all of the work, plus also be able to get the historical designation is to public archaeology laboratory, and that is in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred.
Okay. Is there a motion to award those contracts?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have another extension for Outfront Media, the ESCO agreement until Sep- September of this year.
That is correct.
Is this because they still haven't received ZBA approval? Is that what's holding up?
They're still in negotiations with the ZBA. So there are actually two agreements. An ESCO agreement, where twelve thousand dollars, the town has been holding this amount of time, and also the Sixth Amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, which is the underlying agreement where they are looking to purchase it, subject to receiving a permit from the zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, so is there a motion to extend both of those until September thirtieth of this year?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And an agreement for survey and design for River Street sidewalks. This is phase two, and once again to Greenman Peterson. Is there a motion to approve this or any...
Can I just get clarification on what part of River Street this is?
So in phase one last year, we went from the center of town, built a sidewalk to War Memorial Park and ended it at Arch Street. And then this here is basically going to go from Arch Street to Howard Street. So you will see on the right-hand side, connected twenty twenty-one work, that is where the sidewalk ends. It will then get extended across the way. At the Walsh property, my understanding is that we will have to build some type of a retaining wall. And then the sidewalk will then go from that junction there down to Howard and connect with the sidewalk that we built there in twenty nineteen.
That would be so awesome. Do you know how dangerous it is to walk down that street? It's nearly impossible. I didn't realize the sidewalk would be on that side. For some reason, I was thinking it was on the side with the river.
No. If it goes on that side, we run into some wetland issues.
Oh, that makes sense.
And according to what I am being told from the, from the engineer, that road in most places, it always varies, but that road in most places is eighteen feet wide. In the county layout, meaning that the, the area that the, of the road that the town owns is forty feet wide. So we have more room on the north side than we do on the south side. We run into wetland areas that we could get past, but it's going to cost a lot more money. So it would be better for us to lay the sidewalk out on that side of the road.
If I remember correctly, there's a really old stone wall that goes along River Street right there as well, so that'll be interesting how that works out. So this is the survey and design of it?
That is correct.
All right, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the meeting minutes of December fifteenth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And accept or review the meeting minutes of January fifth and January nineteenth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a vacation carryover request for Daniella Nielsen, five days. Is there a motion to approve that?
And this is according to the contract. I think you already told me it was, so, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We ought to discuss the bylaw study committee memo. I want here for public comment, David, Town Administrator's report.
So first off, PFAS before update, very good news. All of them are below the new, new regulation of twenty parts per trillion. And as Wayne says, it is actually the fifth month in a row, so we are under no, I know there's been questions in the past whether we're under any water advisories at all. We are not, because for more than one quarter, we have been below. So it's all really good news. The other good news is that DEP has now approved the pilot study demonstration at that plant. So you'll recall that the state, Michelle Dubois initiated in the House, and Walter Timmeltie was able to confirm it in the Senate, but we received a hundred thousand dollars, and the total cost was going to be about three hundred seventy-six thousand. And the Board of Selectmen on January fifth voted to take two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars of our ARPA funds, combine the two, and be able to do what we call a short-term fix, an immediate solution to our PFAS issue at the Manly Street well, and that has now been approved through DEP. So we don't have a timeframe as to when it will initiate. I asked Wayne, he gave me an answer. I don't remember. I don't really always understand water jogging, to be honest, but, but obviously they're, they're going through it, so it's all good news. It's all good news. A handful of other FYIs. For the last handful of years, I had requested that the board join a nationwide opiate settlement, and we've litigated that through the attorneys, and it has now been settled, at least part of them. And so this here, I signed with the Selectmen's Authority last week, and this is going to give the town three hundred and eight thousand dollars over fifteen years that we will be able to use specifically for opiate-related issues. So we'll have to figure out how that's going to work. On average, it's about fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year, so we'll, again, we'll see what the actual specifics are once they're released. This is an agreement that was finalized with the Attorney General's Office. So again, good news.
Can I ask a quick, is this what Mary Waldron was referring to when she emailed? Okay, great.
Yeah, I already signed it at that time.
Yeah, terrific.
But a lot of, you know, it's, look, we did everything right. We started from the beginning on this, and we kind of led the charge, but then what happened didn't, you know, there's nothing negative. But at the very end, the Attorney General's Office said, well, hey, whoever wasn't on board, jump on board. So that's why that last memo went out, and so a lot of people who were not involved from the beginning had that opportunity. So good for them. Unfortunately, it decreased our, obviously, our, our end allotment. But at the end of the day, this was all about being able to make sure that we could help people that either have become addicted or to prevent them from getting addicted in opiates. So in the end, it's all good.
What was the, excuse me, David, what was the total sub-settlement?
On this one here, I think a total was twenty-six billion.
Twenty-six billion, yeah.
And again, that was over ten or twelve years. It's complicated because this was only a handful of the manufacturers. It's complicated because this is only a handful of the manufacturers and a couple of the distributors. So I didn't write down which ones this was, but there is still two or three other ones because there's still the Purdue one that is outstanding, and there's one or two other ones that are outstanding as well.
Thank you.
And if you scroll one more, one more, uh, one more, sorry. Is that, keep on going until we get to a chart.
Chart, okay.
There it is. If you can read that, it is so hard to read. But basically, that's West Bridgewater. You can see what we're going to receive in each successive year. And as I said, the total at the end is about three hundred and eight thousand dollars. So we will receive, from the Attorney General's Office, we'll receive some guidelines as to how we can spend it. You know, if we want to hire a drug treatment person, for example, we could do that. In year one, we get thirty-four thousand. You could probably fund that. But by year three, we're at sixteen thousand. Not sure we could still fund that. So, um, so we'll have to, you know, have to bring it back before the board and see how you want to spend it.
When do we make that decision?
Once I get the regulations from the AG's office.
Oh, I see.
I don't know, I don't know all the particulars yet.
Yeah.
Next is, again, you know, there is still, there's now a second booster available. The Baker Administration has made that clear. It's for people who are fifty and older or have multiple, um, underlying conditions. I also wanted to give credit to our fire chief. He applied for a grant for an external defibrillator through FEMA and was awarded that this past week in the amount of two thousand one hundred and eight dollars. And this here will go on to one of our fire trucks. Also, you'll recall a few weeks ago that the state Senator Walter Timmeltie was here. He was talking about a pilot initiative for cybersecurity. I did attend that with our IT director in Braintree last Wednesday, and we heard a presentation from the National Guard. So I'm just awaiting instructions on how to sign up, but I see no reason not to sign up. What is interesting is that the way I originally understood it, I thought everybody that could sign up could participate in the program. But it sounds like there's, they are going to limit it. So we'll see when we receive it, but as soon as I receive it, unless the board thinks otherwise, I'm going to immediately sign it and send it in. The idea is for them to actually literally attack our infrastructure and then give us a report as to where our vulnerabilities are. So if it's not going to cost us anything...
That's awesome.
I, I think so.
That's huge.
I can't see any reason not to do it. So anyway, we did attend it, and Ed and I both agree we should, we should take the opportunity. A bunch of requests for the transfer station for politically-related activities. I signed off on that. And then also a lemonade stand fundraiser. I signed off on that as well for Boston Children's Hospital.
Thank you, David. With nothing further, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically the Department of Unemployment Assistance, Determination, and Maguire Diddy versus Town West Bridgewater, since in my opinion, as Chair, strategizing in open session would be, would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
And roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Raise, yes.
Kenny Haines, yes.